I would like to call the February 5th, 2024 City Council Meeting to order at 7:00 PM. If you'd all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. We'll call all councilors are in attendance tonight. We have City Manager Dave Sukow in tonight. It's like online, we do have our legal counsel Ashley Driscoll. And, okay, let's get going. And Brian Jensen is online as well. Lieutenant Flue Allen is present. Okay, so let's, we've got a lot to cover tonight, so let's move through some of this quick stuff. Approval of the agenda, I'm looking to get an approval of tonight's agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve the agenda as written.
Counselor Holmes, motion to approve the agenda as written, any seconds?
A second.
Second, Counselor Jacobs, any questions or discussions? Any none, all those in favor state by saying aye. Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we are now at a point, uh, public comments. This is a place on the agenda where the public is invited to speak to council regarding any matter not on the agenda and not scheduled for public hearing. Members of the public addressing council are requested to give their name and city of residence. We ask that you please try not to repeat questions, uh, to allow for more speakers. At this section, speakers are to limit their testimony to five minutes, as we're limited to 30 minutes total for all public comments. And we do put a timer and have a timer up there to give you guys, um, uh, help there if, if it does help. I understand some of you do want to comment on the CCSO discussion. And during the agenda item in a little bit, we will allow for questions and comments. Uh, where we may try to answer some questions there, or at least write them down and get them answered for you. Um, during this section of public comment, we will most likely not answer a comment as it's, it's just for public comment. So as I call, we do have some here, if you are online and do want to do cut public comment now or later, please show up, raise a hand and Susan will get you and ask, um, your name and city and she'll put you on the list. Um, if you're on a phone call and not online, um, I will, I will get to that point and ask if there's anybody on the phone that would like to add public comment. Any questions, council? Okay, starting, go ahead.
A point of clarification by Counselor Holmes.
Counselor Holmes.
Yeah, I would just add, and so those who elect to reserve their comments for that agenda item will have the benefit of hearing the, the information presented and some council discussion prior to that. So it just might be helpful and informative for your comments as well.
Do you have any more with you? Other than the one online? I'm, I've got some here, I'm going down in order received, I'll call your name and if you want to speak now, you can come up to the microphone and speak. If you want to wait till we get to that agenda item, I will put you back on top. Um, when you do get up, we just asked you to speak your name and your city and really speak into these so they can hear you online. Uh, it really, they, to hear you, they need to be on the microphone. Uh, Brian Rosenthal. Would you like to talk now?
Hi, uh, Brian Rosenthal, um, I live in, uh, Scappus or at least 1,200 feet outside of city limits. Um, I came here tonight because, you know, I know, I always hear scuttle about the police. The Police Department of Scappus has done wonderful for me, the businesses that rent from me for the last 20 years. And I know there's been some personnel issues, but I was, in my corporate life, I was involved in many outsourcing efforts. They all ended up disastrously. Outsourcing is often problematic. Once you destroy the infrastructure and, and the, the system you have, it's very hard to put it back together. In fact, I've never seen one put back together successfully. I've seen a few attempts. I can give you many examples, but very recent one was during the snowstorm, the excellent service the police department gives. So I live 1,200 feet outside of city limits. A truck jackknifed on JP West. Police officer came to my door and said, don't drive on JP West because you won't be able to stop and you'll plow into him. It was a Scappus police officer. We never saw the sheriff. Now, I think Sheriff Pixley does a wonderful job. But that job, it has so much land and so much territory to cover. I just don't see how he could possibly cover this area. Also, we have a fairly low crime rate to many, compared to many areas in the county. We don't have our own police department. Instead of having a police officer sitting on a corner, you know, watching traffic or being at the school interacting, or maybe helping us with a public event we're having, those police officers are going to get called away. There's no way that you're going to keep that police officer here to do some community policing while there's a major event going on somewhere else where they could use him. And I know Scappus also would send police as well, but it shouldn't, it's just better to have that two-tier system. City's going through a branding process right now. That is very important to the city. Part of it is the video, part of it is going to be slogans and other things. I think of a brand, I think of a group, a community. And I, if I say it's impossible, I think it'd be very difficult out of our own police department for us to appear to be a cohesive community. And that's it, thank you.
Appreciate it, thank you, Brian. Okay, um. We have, uh. Except Dustin Hall, would you like to speak now or during the session? Perfectly up to you, I'll put you on top of that list. Uh, Pete McQ and Joel Haugen. Thank you, Dustin.
No, they, they're not here, surrounded by people who are not feeling well. Okay, thanks, here, I'll get one, I'll get one to answer.
We'd like to get, excuse me, I have a little trouble with my voice. We'd like to, uh, give you a chance to look over that information before we say very much, so if you would do that. Mostly the top part.
Yeah, actually, while you're reading, um, I'd like to do a little editing here on this. Um, I'm, we're at number, on point number five. Since we're in unknown territory and we'd really like to get a commitment tonight, not necessarily a vote, but just kind of a thumbs up or thumbs down on, on whether you're going to support, uh, the chess tournament, uh, on April 6th. Um, so we are indeed going to ask for a thousand dollar commitment, uh, to cover the cost of equipment and then the facilitator from Corvallis. So with that, with that, I'll, I'll, we'll reserve it for questions and kind of conserve time here and expedite things.
Okay, the only question is, you're still working with the school district?
Okay, so we, so we are, we, we do have this commitment from the school district for April 6th at the middle, middle school. Uh, so we are going to, and Pete and I are going to meet with the principal this Thursday, where we'll kind of go through, go through the parameters and particulars. Uh, so we are committed to that point, but we don't have the funds for, uh, the thousand dollar we need. But we also would like to have support from the city for, uh, for your website, putting it into the newsletters. Uh, hopefully give you some memorabilia for, uh, for the people that come to the, uh, event. Um, and it's really good, a good cost benefit for, uh, promoting the city. You get people from Seattle to Medford, uh, parents that are, uh, many of them are engaged in the professional capacities, whether they're working for Boeing or, or Intel or whomever. Uh, so it's a good exposure for the community, uh, to have this and it's a very minimal cost.
The last time we did this was 2019 and eighty percent of our participants were from out of the area. Uh, we had quite a few from Scappus, but the majority, eighty percent, were from, uh, about the area. So, uh, we like to showcase our city and our town, our schools, our parks. And Joel put together a really nifty map the last time we did this that showed where each of those parks are, showed where the schools are. And it was, in fact, I, the following weekend, some fellow's driving through our neighborhood while we were, I was cutting the grass and he stopped, he wanted to know. He said, I was here last week and I want to find out, can you tell me where the brown zone of that trail is? He was with his family, so he, he came back and used that map to drill it, given us. So, uh, it's a really good chance for us to showcase Scappus and we're probably going to ask Mayor Joe to give a little pitch if he's around that day and, uh, but.
Before my birthday, I'll be there.
Oh, good, good, well, what a way to celebrate, yeah.
City Hall, a town meeting that day.
Yeah.
Okay, so tonight we're just asking for a thumbs up or thumbs down on a commitment to support it, support this event.
Anybody comfortable with that? I, I'd like to look at it a little bit more and talk to our city manager and see what our options are. Personally, um, we've had a handful of people come and asking for money, so I, I do need to talk and see what our responsibilities and availabilities are. We've had a handful asking.
We know we should have come in when the community enhancement grants were, you know, up and out. You know, we're kind of typical community people that, uh, have good ideas and no money. And, uh, but we just thought, well, if we could put it on hold until next year, we could move forward. It's a worthwhile enough project, we thought that we should move forward. And I think we'll have a good turnout again this year, but we're a little bit, a little bit late in getting, getting everything going.
But what will really tell us tonight, because we have to make a decision by the 15th to either pull the plug or not, is this that if, if you're opposed to this, I'd like to see the thumbs down right now. And so if there's four thumbs down at this point, then we're, we're pulling the plug.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Counselor.
I want to preface this by, this isn't not supporting this event. This is, this is a precedent that we've sent as a, as a council in, in his, history of not necessarily just writing checks to people who come and ask for funds. We do have the Community Enhancement Program Grant Opportunity. I know that the timing isn't great for this. However, um, I cannot, I cannot support providing a thousand dollar grant to pay for the, the tournament on behalf of the city of Scappus because that's historically not something that we've done before. And if we set that precedence this time, that's something that we would continue to have to say yes to for those that come before us. Um, that is why we do have the CEP grant opportunity for nonprofits to get up to $5,000. I'm thinking about, um, the reusable Welcome to Scappus chess banner. Um, you know, I know that there's some printing and banner companies that do make those where you can just change the date. I think, you know, that CEP grant opportunity could allow them plenty of funds to really get this, um, off the ground. But unfortunately, I'm a thumbs down specifically to the thousand dollars.
I'm definitely not a thumbs down to the tournament, but I, I do have uncomfortable spending the money. Have you talked to the chess club? And, and also they print banners at the high school, do their programs?
The chess club is actually the sponsor, co-sponsor.
Being part of there, they do, uh, they make nice big banners down in their, their lab there. And they did it for all the basketball players and, and they're really nice and, and they can probably do it. I don't want to tell you how much because I'm not sure, but they do make nice banners. So, um, I personally don't feel comfortable writing a check for a thousand to sponsor this tournament at this moment.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Counselor.
Uh, I hear, uh, it is important for us to be fiscally responsible and we have to do it in the channels that we have lined. What I'm curious though, maybe we could help support in terms of publicity, um, in terms of utilizing our social media channels? Um, and maybe putting, getting it in the newsletter? Maybe that's something that we can do to, to help with the advertising efforts, um, at this time?
Well, it would suffice tonight if, if we can just have thumbs up support to the extent you can. Now, if you feel, put it, if you put it in that context, that'll be really helpful to us. You know, if they're not, if they aren't four thumbs up, then, then we're going to pull.
I know there's, oh, with the money and the process, we're asking for it, but, so we're, we're, you know, we can live with that, we'll figure something out.
Joel, how many are you expecting will attend?
We're, we're expecting a hundred, maybe more.
And is it free or is there entry fees?
Uh, there's, there's a ten dollar fee that goes into the Oregon Chess Federation. Uh, so that registers the, everybody in the Oregon Chess Federation, so we don't see any of that, so that's just a ten dollar fee.
Okay, have you considered charging entry fees?
Well, we want to be as inclusive as possible, we want to try and engage their youth and, you know, from all over the place. So that's kind of the, the chess federation's mantra is to, you know, try to be, make it as inclusive as possible.
I understand, thank you.
We've left that open though, we might charge something above the ten dollars, we're not, we're not sure yet.
Well, thank you for this, I don't feel, I mean, I, I, I don't like to think that we're the reason that this wouldn't go off because we don't give you thumbs up. So, um, I, I don't at this time.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I am in favor of what Counselor Jacobs is, is saying, you know, we're, we're all about for any, any community organization to publicize a new letter, newsletters or promote on our social media channels, we do that for a lot of organizations. So I'm in thumbs up for number one, but a thumbs down for, um, anything financial. And I hope that the, um, the PUD does come through with their grant.
Thank, thank you.
Thank you.
Drew Lada? Would you like to speak now or wait for the? Sure, okay, thanks, so, yeah, fair, we'll try to get you guys. Justin Stevenson? Okay, thank you. Any more, Susan? Okay, we've got Dan Theo, the now online. Would you like to speak now or wait for the agenda portion as well?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I'm here on behalf of the Scappus Police Officers Guild. I'd like to wait until the agenda item regarding, uh, CCSO.
I'm going to put you down here so we'll make sure we won't forget you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, uh. Anybody on the phone calls, if you are on phone and would like to speak sometime tonight, let us know now. Okay, we'll check back again later. Uh, onto the consent agenda. Looking at the December 11th, 2023 City Council Work Session Minutes, December 11th, 2023 City Council Meeting Minutes, January 22nd, 2024 City Council Meeting Minutes, and our January 27th, 2024 City Council Special Meeting Minutes. Looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Counselor President Grayson.
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Question by Counselor President Grayson, any seconds?
Second.
Second by Counselor Miller, any discussion? Any none, all those in favor state by saying aye. Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. On to old business. Brought this up last meeting and we made a few changes and like to go over it again. Resolution number 2401, a resolution adopted, adopting public contracting rules and procedures and repealing resolution number 23-14. Tonight, we're joined by Public Works Contract Manager Charlotte Baker and Assistant to City Manager Isaac Buttman. Take it away.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, I'm a little congested tonight, so please excuse my voice. So as Mayor Backus just stated, um, this was presented to you at the council meeting on the 22nd of January. Um, and we were directed to go back and add some language, um, directing staff to invite COVID, C-O-B-I-D, uh, registered businesses to, um, bid on intermediate and large procurements. So, uh, we, with, with the help of our attorney, um, did add that. Uh, as you can see on page 30 and 30, um, he has added some language for us, directing staff, um, to, when practical, attempt to advertise such bid or proposal to COVID-certified businesses. Um, those are all the changes that were made, just those, uh, small additions. Recommend that council adopt resolution 2401, a resolution adopting public contracting rules and procedures and repealing resolution 2314 as written.
Any questions or discussion? Yes, Counselor Santiago.
Thank you, Charlotte, thank you staff and, um, Ashley for, for incorporating. Um, it's, Ashley's in there, right?
Um, well, it was, I just have a quick question. Um, just, if you can just define practical, Ashley, or what example of a practical, um, when practical would mean for record?
Okay, city, to raise up Ashley Driscoll, I'm actually going to turn it over to Ashley Dukel, who handled this for the city. Um, she just needs to be promoted, I believe.
She's on.
Hi, Ashley, you just need to unmute, you should, uh, be able to speak.
She is saying that she does not have the ability to unmute.
I don't have that ability either for her.
Um, so can we work this out and then come back to this question? Does that work, Counselor Santiago?
Sorry, I didn't hear that.
This will probably be the only question that we do have.
Yeah, that's the only question.
Okay, one second.
Charlie, would you be able to answer?
Any other insights?
This was drafted by her, so I wouldn't, I don't, I don't feel comfortable, yeah.
So, she's still trying to log on, but I think the answer is actually pretty simple, it just means possible, when possible or practical. So it gives staff the ability to do it generally and then they can adopt, um, specific policies, is what Ashley is saying.
All right, can you repeat what she was saying?
Um, she said that it, it just directs staff generally and then we can create our own policies. I know Isaac and I had talked about, um, being more specific and a, and a more specific staff policy. Um, aside from the resolution, giving more strict guidelines on, on when to do it.
Yeah, so I think, I think what Ashley was meaning was when practical and possible. Um, and I think the point was to add some flexibility, so we're not too hampered by the language as things change. Because there might be a better resource that comes up in the year that makes it easier for us to reach people or better ways to reach people. Um, and I think, I think that's what Ashley was saying.
Oh.
Looks like Ashley.
Counsel. Well, there we go. Yes, I have, I apologize for that, for the technical difficulties, I was having some issues connecting, um, I'm sorry about that. But I heard you ask the question of what practical meant in that, uh, circumstance. And I did not hear Ashley Driscoll's response because I was reconnecting. But I would assume, um, she just said when it all possible. And I had also messaged her to, uh, confirm that basically, um, the goal here is just to direct staff generally and then to allow them to adopt a more specific policy on the matter.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, no problem, and apologies again.
Yeah, thank you. Um, no more questions, are we, anybody want to make a motion? Yes, Counselor Santiago.
I will make a motion to, um, request staff to, to adopt resolution 2401. As written.
We have a motion to recommend staff to, counsel adopt resolution 24-01, resolution adopting public contracting rules and procedures and repealing resolution 2314 as written. Any seconds? And by Counselors Jacobs, any more discussion? Any none, all those in favor state by saying aye. Aye? Opposed? Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you, Charlotte.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, as many of you know, we are, um, about a full-time city manager at this moment. And so in the interim, while we go out and do a exhaustive search for a new city manager, we are looking to hire a interim city manager. Um, and we did reach out to Larry Lehman. If, um, if you wanted to come up, say hi, or are you good? Good. Um, so you've all seen a last meeting, uh, some of you have been able to speak with him and talk to him. In front of you is a contract that we wanted to extend to him. Um, so we're looking for a motion to accept that contract.
Mayor?
Yes, Counselor Jacobs.
I move that we accept the contract to be presented for interim city manager Larry Lehman.
I have a motion to accept the contract as presented, uh, to Larry Lehman, any seconds? Second by Counselor Santiago. Question, discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Counselor President Grayson.
Just for clarification, section two, term B. If at some, at, at the termination of this contract which ends July 1st, if, just for the record, if we haven't filled the spot permanently, that would then go back for Public Works Director Dave Suker to step back in?
We would look at that, I think, based on where we are in the process. If it was a short term, then I, I would ask Dave, I, I would think that would be good. If it's still, we're months away, then we revisit and Larry has some availability, we deal with him first and see if that will work, and if not, then we'll have to look at other options based on where we are in our search.
Thank you, thank you, Larry.
More discussion? Any none, all those in favor state by saying aye. Aye? Opposed? Any none, yes? Appreciate it.
Thanks, Larry.
Thanks, Larry.
Thank you. I, yeah, for you to know, he was our interim manager about 10 years ago, so he does have some experience with Scappus and a few of our employees. So I think it will be a good fit and I'm looking forward to working with you. Thank you, Larry. Cool. Okay. Okay, um. Moving on to number four. Um, okay, we're here now looking at, exploring law enforcement operation, options. I want to quickly kind of go over one thing I had, I'm very glad to see the turnout tonight. I think this is a very important discussion and I do really appreciate you all being here. Um, it's a poor discussion for our community. Uh, real quick on me, kind of where it began, during my campaigning and I believe Counselor Holmes as well, we heard a lot of citizens, uh, talk about safety in our city. Issues from speeding to crime to homelessness to kids walking safely through our streets. And so safety has been a very, uh, top priority for me. And after a year in office, uh, we felt it was time to revisit. Um, one of the things that came up a lot, we heard, was 24/7, 365 coverage. And so to that, I first wanted to define that and I think we've defined it, what it means to us is, um, two officers in the city on duty in city limits at all times. Um, and then after that, I think it was important thing that we'd need to find out is what level of service do the citizens of Scappus desire and expect from our police? Is the 24/7, 365 coverage what they want? And if it is what they want, are they willing to pay for it if it requires extra funds and takes time? Uh, so deciding to look at this, I believe is our responsibility to our citizens to look at the options that we have to accomplish the, this goal. And one of those options was, was explore contracting through CCSO. The other option is look at keeping the local Scappus Department, Police Department as it is, make adjustments as needed and to try to attain this goal. So I needed, I believe we needed to look at both options. Um, I think we're doing a disservice to Scappus if we didn't do our due diligence and research our options. But right now, we're in a discovery phase where we are gathering information so we can have the most accurate information as we try to compare apples to apples. Tonight, we'll provide you with the information that we have gathered to date. Uh, we have many questions that we asked and are trying to answer, and I understand you will as well. Hopefully through this presentation, some of your answer, questions will be answered and maybe other questions will arise. So after we present, and council and staff has had a chance to ask questions, make comments, we'll open it up to some public comment and comments and questions and we'll try to answer if we can. And it will take notes and try to get back to you at a, at a later time if we need to. I think the only decision that we may come out of tonight's discussion is whether or not the information presented warrants another stage of exploration. And if, if, um, if so, a second round of questions, comments and answers using staff, council and the Scappu citizens and other stakeholders, um, we will, we'll involve you. So Kim Holmes and Tyler Miller have done a lot of work on this and they'll now try to present our findings to date.
Thank you for that preface, Mr. Mayor, and I also want to thank all of you for spending your time with us this evening. I do think the public process works best when the public is engaged, so it's nice to see everyone interested and available to provide some comment. Um, so I, I also, just one thing I want to also add and make clear is that So I also, just one thing I want to also add and make clear is that this exploration is not in any way a commentary on our current officers. Through the course of this discussion over social media, we have heard directly from the community how much they appreciate and value the officers and the community involvement that they have. So I hope that none of this is misconstrued in that way. Just to add a little more context to this, so small communities all across Oregon are struggling to figure out how to provide adequate coverage for their residents, maintaining their own police departments. And I was actually just at a League of Oregon Cities meeting for Region 1 on Friday out in Bay City and got a chance to talk to some of the smaller communities in our region about what they're doing, what their approach is, and what their challenge is. And Rockaway just transitioned also to a contract service arrangement. And, you know, there are pros and cons. And I think that's the reality of the decision-making process is that no matter what we decide, there's going to be pros and cons. At our current, and we'll talk about kind of the budget, the general fund, how that works, and why there are some constraints as to putting more financial resources towards our department so that we could get everything that we want, right? There are limitations, and so we'll talk about that. But also just, yeah, recognize that regardless of where we land on this, there will be pros and cons for each. But I also want to say that there are administrative efficiencies and some cost savings that communities are also finding. So if achieving 24/7 coverage is the top priority, that might be the most achievable way to get it without having to go out for an operating levy to add to our funding source for the department. So please do keep that in mind. So how we arrived at this packet of information, as the mayor discussed, Counselor Miller and I put together kind of an initial set of questions, because I think there are some primary and basic expectations that we would have either way, whether it's contracting with the sheriff's office or maintaining your own police department. So the first thing we wanted to look at was cost. So you'll see there's a section with questions around cost. If this, the sheriff's office could not provide the level of service we want at a price lower, at or lower than what we are currently paying, that option's off the table. So that's what we tried to tease apart in that first set of questions. The level of service. We wanted to make sure that the level of service that we expect would be practically achievable. So you'll see questions around that. We wanted to make sure that the contract terms would be reasonable. Are there ways for us to get out of the contract? If we were to get out of the contract, what type of assets would we bring back to the community? And then, you know, would our officers be treated fairly and be taken care of? And so those are the questions you'll see in the personnel section. Certainly, we would want to ensure that officers are brought over to the county. All of their years of service are recognized, and so you'll see those questions addressed in there as well. Yeah, and all of the information that I'm referring to is in the council packet, which there are, were copies available. I don't know if they were all taken, but you'll find it on page, beginning page 58. There's still a stack, yeah. And so just the last question that we wanted to address in section of questions, you know, is it possible to maintain the level of community policing that our residents clearly enjoy? And that is attending the events. And I will say that if your contract is not structured properly, that is something you potentially can lose, right? So through these discussions, too, trying to identify really what are the priorities? How do we balance all of those? And if contracting is something that's pursued, how do we ensure that contract is structured in a way that delivers what we are asking for and intend for the residents of SCAPUs? So I just want you to know that this, these are all of the things that we were considering. And if in this information, any of my fellow counselors feel that any of those questions are not well addressed, or we don't feel that the level of service could be delivered, then I don't think it warrants further exploration. But if in this information, we do think that, you know, there's a potential that contracted services could get us what we would need to get to 24/7 coverage, and it's just worth another round of exploration, that's the next step that we'll take. And as the mayor said, questions will come from counselors, staff. We've already started to get questions from staff from the police department, which will be included, and then certainly the questions that you all have and bring to us tonight. We won't be able to answer all of those questions, but we will certainly take those questions and consolidate them. So we all have answers.
Okay. All right. Any other comments? Counselor Miller, do you want to add anything before we dive in?
Yeah, just really quick, I just want to make clear, based on some of the comments that I've seen on social media, that if the council were to decide to contract with the sheriff's office, these would be additional positions that are dedicated 100% to the city of SCAPUs. They would stay inside the city limits. That's what the contract would say, and that's what the expectation would be. So the coverage that's on the outside and the rural areas of the county, it wouldn't be impacted. That would stay as it is. The deputies or officers, whatever you want to call them, they would be dedicated to this contract. Of course, the expectation would be that they're 100% dedicated to the city of SCAPUs and city limits also. And so one of the concerns that I had, and you'll see the question in here, is, well, how do we ensure that? And there's some different tools that are available for us to be able to make sure that the performance of the contract, in other words, the contract terms are being adhered to, and that's GPS, AVL devices. And that is one of the things that we asked Sheriff Pixley was, would he be willing to have those devices in the vehicles that are associated to the SCAPUs contract so that we can actually see on a certain interval, whether it be 60 days, 90 days, whatever, that they actually did spend the time within the city limits? Because you can geofence around the city limits. So they can, we can actually get reports on how much time and make sure that we did get what we paid for and what we expected. That was one of my concerns, and because if that wasn't possible for me, that was going to be like, okay, well, we don't really have any way to prove that we're getting what we're paying for, so that would have been a no-go. So that is in this first set of questions. Am I missing anything? Anything else?
Okay, so I think we can dive in. Susan, do you have those budget slides, or Isaac, budget slides? Just to, just to level set really quickly, because this was something I had to learn when I assumed this position, kind of what the general fund is and what all the general fund is paying for. So I put together just a few slides from our last budget. We will be entering our budget cycle here in this break, doing our budget review. Do we need any members for the budget committee while we're waiting for the slides to come up?
Should be pretty well-staffed.
Okay. But if you're interested in learning more about the budget, there will be a number of meetings that we have around the budget process. But while we're reading for that, if you would like to turn to page 81 and 82 in your packet, that's where I've got same copy of the slides there. So you'll see what all, kind of the buckets of public services that are paid for out of the general fund. And then you'll see that relative to the amount of property taxes that the city is bringing in from residents within the city limits. So you'll see things like the Community Development Center. They handle all of our kind of permitting and planning, keep the city moving forward. We've got culture and recreation. I mean, Dave's staff does a wonderful job with the budget they have to maintain our parks and public spaces. You've got money there for just general operation of our city government, and you've got the public safety there. So you will notice that our largest public expenditure out of the general fund is around public safety. So if you look at that as an overall percentage, actually, it's on page 85. Police is 43% of our general fund. So just keep that in mind as you start looking at growing, say 43, it's like, say we wanted to increase that budget 10%, right? 43% of that budget, that's almost half the budget. So it gets difficult to try to take those resources from other public services and functions. So just keep that in mind. On the next page on 83, we've just got a list of the different, where does our general fund come from in addition to property taxes? So franchise fees, intergovernmental revenue, some of that comes from the county. So we are able to charge for some services, and then we've got some other revenue sources there. Just to give you a general picture of kind of where the money is coming in from, again, not a lot of opportunities to grow these buckets here. And we can't change property taxes, right, either? So it's all unassessed value. So we are pretty limited with what we can work with at this time, given the revenue sources. Page 85, you'll just see a percentage breakdown of, yeah, percentage breakdown of where that, where the money is going to the different functions. And then you'll see kind of the, on 86, these slides, maybe, there it is, okay. On 86, you've got kind of the growth trend of the different cost areas over 10 years. And you'll see that there's been a little bit of volatility in the cost of the police force. I think there's some discussion to be had about kind of those dramatic trends in the past couple of years. I think long-term, you would maybe see that level out, kind of still an upward projection. We do have, retention is going to be one of the things that we need to work on if we are going to maintain our police department. And that is going to mean having more, like increasing the salaries of our officers to be more competitive, right? So if we were to maintain the department, we will be looking at some increased personnel costs to bump up their pay and be more competitive. So that's another thing to keep in mind as we start going through some numbers in this discussion, just what we can anticipate for the future. So budgeting 101 is complete. And we can go ahead and, I guess, the plan I'm thinking of is maybe just going section by section, allowing council to have kind of a brief discussion if you have questions about some of the information contained in here, or if you feel that there's a particular area that needs to be drilled down more, or an area that we completely missed. Mr. Mayor?
Counselor President Grayson.
Before we start, I just want to preface that the questions or comments that are brought up on my behalf this evening, I plan to direct towards, towards staff, towards Dave, and lean on some of our staff experts that are either online or in the room, just to help me clarify some kind of institutional knowledge. All right. So our first section here is around estimated costs. So what we tried to do is to go ahead and get from the sheriff's office what it would cost us to have these different positions, both officers and support staff, which pretty closely, well, aside from the SRO and the community services officer, I think pretty closely mirrors some of the support and staffing levels that we currently have within the department. And so you'll see kind of an estimated personnel cost. There is about $2.279 million. If you look at the estimated personnel costs for our police department from 2023, 24, you're looking at 2.251. So we are at somewhat similar personnel costs with the added seasonal school resource officer and the, well, I guess we don't have the cost of the part-time community service officer. That would be pending, because that doesn't currently exist, so they didn't have a cost out for that. Then the second section, they've tried to estimate some of the costs, just the other costs of fuel overtime that we could incur potentially, trying to anticipate some of those. And so with all of that factored in, plus the 10% CCO administrative costs, we're looking at about 2.7. Again, that would be for 24/7/365 coverage. And then some of the questions that stem off of that, we won't go question by question unless someone has a specific question. The questions that stem off of that are trying to get at what some of those unanticipated costs could be down the road, how they could be addressed.
Are you going to break at certain points for?
Yep, so now, yep.
Okay. Ms. Mayor?
Yes.
So just for some context here, so this is for what we could potentially get. And then our current staffing, so for example, there's 10 patrol deputies that are listed here on this document. So the equivalent would be our patrol officers that we have now. We have eight. We do not currently have an SRO. I do have a comment here or a question that I think the school district, if I'm correct, the school district had previously funded some of the SRO position.
We split the 50/50 in terms of that, but that's something that they have to have funds for and at the time.
Yeah, so my question there is, is if the school district, have a conversation with the school district about if they will fund a portion of that or all of it. Going down to expenses, I do have a question about the overtime. So my concern is that if we, if our expectation is always to have a minimum of two on 24/7/365, you know, obviously, if there's vacations, training time, basically any sort of leave. Historically, I think we, I think we need to unpack the overtime to make sure that it would, it includes the cost of making sure that we always have two on if, say, a normally scheduled deputy would be on leave, vacation, et cetera. So I just would like to get some more information about what all the overtime estimate includes and make sure that that is very thorough and is properly reflected in any sort of information we have here. There was another comment about fuel. If the city maintained the fuel source that we have now, would we buy in bulk if the fuel cost would actually go down rather than have the county continue to use the card locks like they do now, which is a CFN? The cell phone hotspots, AVL service, again, this is under expenses. I should probably reference the page numbers here. What, I'm looking at 66, thank you. That does include the GPS devices that I mentioned earlier. And the other section there at the bottom of page 66, or it might not be the bottom, I'm looking at my notes here. It says, please create additional for itemized expenses. So one of the things that was noted here, BWC stands for body worn camera. And to the extent that we can recycle or that we would want to recycle equipment that we already have, you know, obviously, that would be pertinent and physically responsible. But 11,700, I was curious if that's a one-time fee to buy additional cameras, or if that's a recurring cost. I'm guessing it's a recurring cost on some sort of a service contract. And then on here. Sorry. And then under the CCSO administrative costs, my question is, if CCSO would be willing to have penalty-type arrangements in the contract if they didn't meet the service expectations the cities paid for? It would be my expectation that if they didn't meet the service level that we're contracting for, that there would be some method for figuring out how much, you know, our next bill would be reduced or some sort of credit. So, you know, for example, if a single deputy's total cost of benefits is 147,000, and that's divided by 2,080 hours, which is a typical work time in a year, what would the cost per hour be, and then would we get that back type of thing? So I would want to see something like that in any sort of contract if council decides this is something they want to pursue. And then also just making sure that we, excuse me, that under expenses here and under personnel, that it includes everything, all necessary equipment, all the vehicles, everything. It's not really clear. And I think that is for section, it's not for section one, but it's for that, that section of expenses.
So are we only talking about page 65 and 66 at this time?
Yes, Counselor Jacob.
So as I am not as familiar with the organizational structures of a police department, and perhaps someone on our council is, in looking at the positions and the estimated cost for our city, the question that comes to my mind is, is that enough staff? Are we too top-heavy? Do we need more patrol? Like, what should an optimal organizational structure look like for our city?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I have a clarifying question. So Counselor Jacobs, are you talking about how they have it laid out here? Because the structure they have on page 65 is not the structure we currently have.
Yes, so I'm asking, is that the right structure? So one lieutenant, two sergeants, 10 patrol? Again, as a person who does not understand organizational structure of the police department, do we need two sergeants? Could we just have one sergeant? Could we get 12 deputies instead? That's something I don't know. So a question I think I'd like to understand a little bit more.
Yes, I definitely, Lieutenant Flouellen or W. Director Bryan or Jensen, if you guys if you guys can answer that or have any, kind of let us know where we are right now.
Thank you very much, Mayor. I think Mr. Jensen may be off right now. So to answer your question, Councilwoman, right now, our police department is staffed for twelve officers. One's going to be a chief, myself as your lieutenant, two sergeants, and also eight patrol officers. Ultimately, when we have those positions fully staffed, department can run within twenty-four hour coverage. Go in detail later when that time comes up, is that why that's not there? Within confines, what I am able to dispose, but going back to two, why we have two sergeants, just besides patrol, there's a lot of administrative duties such as evaluation need to be done by dividing up by two different sections and different shifts. For us right now, I work from Sunday to Wednesday to Wednesday to Saturday shifts. Sergeants are covered for those four days to supervise those officers. Oh yes, having two officers or two sergeants, I believe, is crucial just to make sure that workload is being evenly distributed. And if there's a critical incident like a use of force or pursuit that may happen, there'll be a supervisor who can supervise those things.
Excellent, thank you.
Do you say we can achieve twenty-four hour coverage with twelve right now?
With the current model that we have right now, if our positions were fully staffed, I also believe, I've only been in for a little more than a year, I believe, Scapoose Police Department has had twenty-four hour coverage. Go in detail why some are not fully staffed, then of course, within the confines we have here.
And I ask, does that mean twenty-four, seven, meaning we've had one officer on duty and one on call? Or are we talking two in-city limits at all time? You think if we were all there, are we staffed to have two for every shift in the city? Or would one of those have to be on call?
Do you include with the sergeants supervisors as well, have two officers at the time?
And then you run into leaves or vacations and then you, that's, I'm just trying to see why he offered ten. It may be to cover, cover those.
Well, I would.
Ten and two is twelve. He's offering the same bodies, ten patrol and two sergeants.
This doesn't include a chief and actually only includes lieutenant for less time than.
Currently in our setup, our chief and lieutenant are working, so they are road certified, they go on the road and take calls.
Chief and lieutenant?
Yes.
Yep.
Positions are certified.
The actual case right now. Because it's not full, but when they are in and we are full, they do take calls and run the road like a regular.
Just by looking at a schedule and hours with, you know, one, one, two, eight, that is enough to cover those shifts. One chief, one lieutenant, two sergeants, eight patrol officers.
It can be divided, your mayor. But going back to what we talked about before though, too, the city's going to continue to expand, I believe, here in foreseeable future. Something to look at too is just having those additional to the eight patrol officers we'd like to talk about before. Resource officer, detective, I think that will also maybe help assist with also keeping retention within the department as well, which I think is part of the issue.
Still have a question, Counsel Santiago?
I was, thank you. I was just quick, is there, because I noticed here on page six, there is the K nine. And is that already included in the cost or do they mention?
That would not be in the cost, that would be, we would have to pay for that, so that we were to do it ourselves. I understand.
Do we, I thought we do have a.
We do not. You talked about it as a goal, but I'll get to it.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Just for clarification, did you present these positions and these questions in terms of the lieutenant sergeant? Or did Sheriff Pixley come back and say, this is what we could give you? Or did you, did you ask for a part-time community service officer? Did you list a seasonal school resource deputy? You listed K nine, you approached him on all of the potential options.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
I don't think you went to him and asked for ten patrol, you said, how many would it take?
Right.
On that one, and he said, I would need ten. The other other ones, I think you asked, but if you did a SRO or the community or K.
Right, so what would it take to get us to that twenty-four, seven coverage? Plus, if we were able to offer some of these additional positions and community services, what would that cost? And we included the K nine because we had had some discussion previously with the last chief about potential K nine units. So just exploring what that would entail and cost.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes. I had a question about how the sheriff split, I guess the reasoning behind the lieutenant split seventy-five, twenty-five, the rationale that we wouldn't need full coverage of supervisor pool?
I believe that was the rationale. Sir Miller, do you have more?
Yeah, they, I do recall the sheriff saying that he didn't believe that we needed one hundred percent on a lieutenant. And that is, that is a very common contract arrangement, too, where a lieutenant from a sheriff's office is the acting chief within the city contract. That's a model that is really commonly used across Oregon, Washington, California, that all have a lot of contract cities.
So Mr. Mayor, if I may follow along on that. So we could go back on the contract and ask them, well, right now, we're not at contract, but in just information gathering, we could say, thank you for proposal, we actually would want to be priced at a hundred percent. Like what would a hundred, having a lieutenant here for a hundred percent, what would that look like?
Yeah, these are all just kind of starting points.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Before we get too much farther, there is a discrepancy, and it was noted at the beginning of this conversation, that there is two definitions of twenty-four, seven, three sixty-five coverage. One is how they're detailing it with two officers in city limits physically at all time. However, we currently do provide twenty-four, seven, three hundred and sixty-five coverage, just not with two officers in city limits. And that might look like someone on call, et cetera, but someone that is available to respond. I don't know, Dave or Chris or Brian, if someone can talk about how I've, I've received information from the PD when these events happened and someone made a call to nine-one-one during a time when one is on call for our department, either a sheriff is dispatched or that officer on call is dispatched from Scapoose PD. And in all the data that I reviewed, it was always the Scapoose Police Officer who was on call that responded first. Can you talk a little bit more about that?
Yes, Counsel President. So generally speaking, we have our shifts that end around zero-two. During that timeframe, we already have shifts or people, officers that are being on call status respond to those. There are certain situations, if it were to be generated where for somebody's officer on call, we could always try to contact or OSP counterpart. Well, they really don't have people either, but OSP or Columbia County counterparts. But generally speaking, we do have our officers are first ones to respond to those type of incidents. And I will say this also, all of us in law enforcement, to include Columbia County, we don't really teak tabs about who responds, we ask to assist. I mean, I've assisted them with different situations with Columbia County where their officers in Claskin I, just happened Friday, was domestic violence right outside of city limits, we able to take care of that. So when it comes down to it, we as a police department itself, even though we don't have a person physically there all the time at the timeframe, we do have officers who are on call. And I won't go into details where they live, but there are a lot of officers that live very close within the area here in Scapoose as well and even inside a city, but I won't disclose who those officers are.
Thank you, yeah, thank you.
One question I, if you're on call, I mean, is that basically equates to overtime? I mean, if you get called in, I mean, that's, that's beyond your normal week, work week, right?
Yes, that is correct, generally speaking. There's a, there's on call status that we have for officers, Mayor, which is a certain rate. And if they get called out beyond that ten-hour shift, whatever they have, generally speaking, they're overtimes.
Thank you. I kind of ask that because even, I mean, if we do stay local, I'm trying to get an idea, what would it take to add another officer and increase the service that we have? And so I'd like to know that information, thank you.
And I just, I know you can't share where the officers live, but what about response time? Is there, can you give us an average of response time when an officer is on call and they get called?
It depends on the officer, who the officer is and where they're located at. So I can't give you exact response time when it comes down to it. And I understand, obviously, if there's an emergency, one officer's there immediately. But when it comes down to it, it all depends what officer lives at. I would say more live closer here than further out.
Are there calls where if there's one in the city, and is there calls where they can't go yet until they do get backup? There's calls that they can't respond to till they get backup or they can go to almost every call immediately?
Very good question, Mayor. Generally speaking, no. There's, if there's a call, if the officer's available, we have to prioritize, obviously. I will say this, too, this is not a situation that's unique to cities in Scapoose, this is a problem across the nation. Working in different police departments, well, I could tell you that for a fact. Generally speaking, if there is a call responding to it, even if that's a solo officer at the time, he will still respond to it depending, no matter what, when it comes down to it. That's the expectation that we all have here. And like I said, a lot of times, is additional unit needed? We have another Scapoose officer on, vice versa, we'll have our county car, parks, or OSP, something we do here, law enforcement, community as a whole.
I want to like to clarify that. So there's no time that you wait for backup to, if there's only one officer to go into an incident?
No, the incident is, Counselman.
Thank you.
Isaac, so you were talking about on-call, we pulled on-call numbers for October, November, and December twenty-twenty-three, the number of calls we took. Took one on-call call in December, three on-call calls in November, and two on-call calls in December. So in the context of what we do, there's not a whole lot of calls to come in.
Information to have, and also, we did sign a memorandum a month or two ago that we can call on Columbia County or set up to help, they can help cover shifts if needed, but that's, that's done in advance. You don't just call them up, but we can have them cover if we're short and we can.
Vacations.
Like vacations and leaves and stuff, do have that memorandum.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
So I would kind of like to illustrate the importance of twenty-four, seven, three sixty-five coverage on-duty patrol. Chris, how long have you been a police officer?
I have been a police officer now fully commissioned over twelve years.
Okay. And how many shifts have you worked in between the hours of two AM and six AM?
As a police officer in general, sir, year's worth. Before I worked here, worked nice shifts, so.
Does that include your time with WSP?
Yes, that's correct, sir.
Okay. And between those hours, how many traffic stops, how many self-initiated activities would you estimate that you had done that resulted in an arrest, whether it be for DUI or warrants or anything?
I would have to say probably hundreds. I will say also, as a state trooper, you're also used to working by yourself in a lot of times remote areas.
Thank you.
More on cost, and this is not our last opportunity to raise issues and questions. You know, I think there will be a period of time, if we choose to continue this, to submit questions and those will be gathered. So, but I do want to move things along, so we've got time to hear from the public here. Level of service, it's a little bit shorter section. I guess just two things I'd like to highlight here. If contracting services were pursued, you know, you don't just click the switch overnight. There would be a process to get all of those things in place, estimating that that transition could happen and staffing, getting to those twenty-four, seven level staffing, staffing levels could be achieved within a year. We did want to ask, given that there has been a levy passed to support the growth of the sheriff's office, we wanted to make sure that if that levy, because it's only five years, if that were to not be renewed, would it have any impact on the contracted services that we are asking for? Because we are paying for these, aside from the lieutenant, which is currently listed at twenty-five, seventy-five, because we are paying for these positions in their entirety, they are not dependent on the existence of that levy. So I just want to clarify that. Any questions on level of service or discussion?
I mean, that, that is going to be a big question, too, in whether, whichever route we do go, we're going to come to the community and say, what level of service do you guys want and expect? And, and so we, it is important for us to get a sense of where, what do we want here in Scapoose? So that's, you know, it's going to be important for us to determine that because that will determine, if we do stay, that would determine what we do next, whether we are able to get to there with the way we are or if we're going to have to kind of up with funding sources to add people or rely on the sheriff's office for those shifts that we can't cover, or are we okay the way it is? I mean, it's going to be an important question.
Well, and I do know our interim public safety director, Brian Jensen, has really, in his very short time, done some good things with our department. I don't know if he's on right now, okay. He does have a vision for how the community could get there, but it would take likely a number of years. And there may be a levy required on the back end of that to get us kind of up over the hump to that last staff position or two with that. But he is, he is confident that it's attainable, but the community would need to understand what that timeline is and be patient. Do I move on to contract terms here quickly? All right. We wanted to ask kind of about the term of the contract in terms of duration. We, we would probably be looking at a minimum of a five-year contract. And there would obviously be opportunities for termination. This is one of the few instances, I think we would look to Claskin I to kind of see how they have structured portions of their contract. Their termination clause seems pretty standard there. We also wanted to understand kind of what would happen. So all of our assets from the police department currently would be transitioned over to the sheriff's department for the officers to use all of that equipment still within our city. There's a CIP, Continuous Improvement Program, is that what it is? Anyway, like there's a timeline for which we would be purchasing new equipment and all of that. And they've got the schedule on, I think, a four-year replacement schedule for vehicles and equipment. So if we were to terminate the contract, say, prior to four years or about the three-year mark, whatever hadn't been rotated out of service would come back to the city. If we chose to ride it out five years and not, and not renew the contract, we would likely not be getting any of that equipment back, right? So then, when you're looking at rebuilding a police department, you could be looking at building it from scratch. So that is a big hurdle to some communities that have pursued contracting. But I do believe there is also a way to address that if we wanted to. If there is financial cost savings associated with the contracted services, we could dedicate funds year over year so that we do have some sort of reserve if we were to get ourselves into a position. So that's one thing that I would very much want to see if we were to pursue any sort of contracting option, that we would have some sort of contingency fund to reestablish our police department if and when it were ever needed.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes. Grayson?
I, there was a comment made earlier tonight, and I've had other conversations with individuals internally and externally, and I feel like a five-year contract is pretty much null and void. Once you commit to kind of going over into something like this, it is extremely difficult to come back from. I asked for some numbers on the vehicle costs for the PD since twenty-twenty-one because there is listing here that we would just hand over everything that we have. We've spent two hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars on our own vehicles in the last three years, and that would just be given to them and we would not get that back. I asked about, I'll hold off on that. So number three, the was obvious that the sheriff would respond in that way, that the equipment would, you know, go to them and, but it's not something that I'm okay with. I also, again, have a problem with the contract agreements. I feel, that's fine, there's a five-year contract, but I think when you're signing on something like that, you're signing on something forever.
Maybe you're signing that within those first five years, you get back equipment after that.
I don't know how they, I mean, who tends to the equipment, who keeps it up? Is their level of standard the same as ours?
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor?
I was just going to ask, as part of this exploration, have either Counselor Miller or Holmes, have you had a chance to take a look at other cities that have gone county? And have any of those cities reverted back and brought their policing? cities that have gone county and have any of those cities reverted back and brought their policing back? If you haven't looked at that, maybe that's something we can at least try to look at and, and learn from.
So I want to remind that this is just the first phase of what we intend to be multiple phases of discovery. And obviously, the very first thing was to establish cost, to see if we could even afford it and it made sense on, on that level before we could even go any deeper. It made sense. And of course, the personnel-related issues. So this is just first round of discovery, which I prompted multiple new questions from me in addition to dozens of questions I already have that I'm just waiting for to see. I mean, obviously, it makes sense to ask questions grouped, you know, by topic. And as things move along, if council decides that they want to continue to pursue the discovery. I did want to clarify, I'm not quite understanding Council President Grayson's concern with the five-year thing. So I just want to ask if you can explain that a little bit better. When, Klaskani is five years and, I mean, I'm sure the agreement term could be whatever, but what I looked at in this is that there's a termination clause annually, so I didn't know.
I'm just saying, when you make the decision to hand your department over to somebody else, it's extremely difficult to get that department back and rebuild it. And so my.
And you're saying that the longer you go, the harder, I'm just trying to.
I'm saying it could be three years, five years, 20 years. It doesn't really matter. You're committing to give it away forever. That's my perspective.
Okay. I just didn't understand that the five-year.
I, I mean, I, I do understand, and I think when we do this, that is the intent. But maybe the contract is that five years, their increases can only be, you know, the things within the contract are set. And then after five years, you can renegotiate a different, you know, you can increase your officers. You can do things at the end of the contract, but you're not looking to bring them back necessarily, right?
Well, I did, I was just focused on the five-year part. I, that's the part that I wasn't clear on.
So I mean, you, you build in things into this contract. So you build in a 3% increase each year, you build in a certain things. What happens when we want to change that contract and?
Yeah, that's fine. I'm not saying that it, I'm just saying, when you commit to something like this, it is a, it is not a commitment that should be taken lightly. And if in five years you want to change the contract, that's fine. But I don't think that that realistically looks like you getting back what you once had before.
I agree. I definitely think, I mean, if this was to happen, I, I think it would be indefinite. I mean, you, you wouldn't be looking to bring it back. You might change the terms. It's like when you hire a coach, you're not hiring him indefinitely. There's terms and then those things change. But, but that's all I was thinking of it as, because you can get out after a year. I mean, the, the contract isn't.
Yeah, if we were not happy with the level of service, we could get out in year one, year two, year three, and still get some of those back. We need some decorum. So there will be public comment, period. So we, we're getting through the sections here because we want you all to have the context of the discussion too, so that your, your comments can be, you know, pointed.
We will get there. We, believe me, it will be coming.
Yep. So I actually have, I got a chance to speak with Rockaway, who recently transitioned. I will be going through the list. In the background document, there's a list of a number of communities across Oregon that have contracted services, so I will be reaching out to them. And I do know that Ashley Driscoll represents a number of communities that have switched, and she may be aware of some that have switched back. So all of these communities will be on the table to discuss what their experiences are. Ashley.
Do you have a question, Ashley, or comment?
No, I do have a, a quick comment. And again, this is a policy decision, how the city decides to move forward here. But there are examples of police departments who have entered into IGAs. I believe there are examples of police departments who have entered into IGAs and have unwound those. There are also a plethora of examples from across the state of different, different IGAs where, you know, a, a different government unit has taken over a certain service from the city and that that has been unwound. So when you're looking at this, I would look both at, you know, police departments that contracted with, with county sheriff's departments, but also fire departments, city fire departments that contracted with fire districts and have made the decision to come back as well as of writing other services that have been contracted and unwound if you are going forward with this.
For that context. Any other questions on contract terms or discussion? Personnel. So as I said in the opening comments, we wanted to make sure that, you know, any of the Scapoo's Police Department employees would transfer seniority, that they would be transferred over with equal, if not higher, pay grades. So that's what you'll see addressed in this section. We also wanted to ask about some of the employees that currently serve the community here in the community, whether they would be returned, retained here at this location so that the community would continue to have access to some of those record services and, and things like that. Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I have a question on page 724I. Says generally, what training will employees from the city transfer to the county be expected to successfully complete? And the sheriff's response was, we would submit the sworn staff to a field training and evaluation F-TAP process to familiarize them with Columbia County policies, procedures, and expectations. What is the guarantee if they pass that, that they could remain on the force? And then what's, what are the repercussions if they don't pass their F-TAP test? Or they then let go?
So that would be a question for the sheriff to answer, but I guess I could surmise a few things. A number of our officers have recently gone through F-TAP with the county, right? So I would surely hope that they would be able to meet the same standards and expectations, having gone through that.
Ask a question on that. Tenet, when they go through F-TAP, let's say in Columbia County, are they following our field training requirements or Columbia County's field training requirements?
The one I'm talking about is generally Columbia County's.
And then there is, in the background document listed, there is an Oregon statute that requires that all existing personnel be taken over and transferred. It would be against Oregon statute and regulations to let any of those officers go.
Does that all it says? They will be offered a position, but?
It, it's just for one year. It, it's not a requirement. I mean, I don't know if Ashley has more context with that, but my understanding is, yes, they're required to take them over. But let's say the sheriff has some strain with, with the officers or it's not going. I mean, he's committed to that year, but then beyond that year, he's able to let them go?
Well, he would have to fill those positions in because we are contracting for all the same number of bodies and officers.
I'm just thinking about the person, not the body, the individual that we employ, not necessarily the body. So I have to talk to Officer Barnes specifically as a person, not necessarily a body. So I'm just concerned about how they are reassured about their job.
Well, so this is a question we can pose to the sheriff for follow-up. I would also point to you though, we ask about retention over the last three years. And he does talk about, they have very good retention of existing officers. So I would not, if based on track record, I would not anticipate there being kind of, you know, a high rate of severance after a year. It certainly would be out of the pattern that's been established here, but we can ask, we can ask in the next round if we choose.
I think we need to get clarity with respect to what the performance standards are. And then if officers are not meeting those performance standards, what's the disciplinary action that's taken? And we, we should be looking at how people are performing in the role and then we performance manage accordingly.
Yeah.
So I would just ask that we get clarity with respect to that.
So I just want to make two points. So to Chris's point about F-TAP, ultimately, the City of Scapoo's right now determines who passes our F-TAP or not, not Columbia County. When they're at Columbia County, those standards are applied, but ultimately, we make our choice. That might be different. As for the personnel issues, right now, we, we retain that function. So through your city manager, you get to influence that. When you contract typically, and Ashley can correct me if I'm wrong, and I'm, I'm sure we could ask for contract terms, but it is not typical in my understanding that we would have that kind of direct control. Part of what you get when you contract is, you know, efficiency and administration. And, and that means that administration doesn't happen here, it happens there. So I, I don't, I don't know how much of that we could actually expect to retain. My guess is pretty low.
Yeah, we shouldn't.
Yeah, I think that would be correct.
Yeah, I mean, my understanding is that, you know, some, some agencies, when they contract, you will get assigned a lieutenant. And there's only one lieutenant or two lieutenants. And so if you don't like their service, you don't like the way that they, there's not a substitute. Sometimes people get assigned on six months rotations. Here's, I, I mean, that's a lot more there.
Do you have a question or comment, Ashley?
Yeah, I can speak to that somewhat. As Counselor Holmes mentioned, a number of our clients do contract with sheriff's departments. And the city council definitely has a, an influence over who's lieutenant. That person generally functions as the chief of police for the city. So you do have control, you know, over that person. It's not an employment relationship, but you definitely have ongoing conversations with the county regarding whether that person's meeting your needs. And then some of the other questions about job security for transferred employees. Most of the employees transferred would be transferred into the collective bargaining agreement at CCSO and would have some of the same job protections that you have under the current.
Thank you.
I, I'll try, it is a little, yeah, difficult to listen. So they would be transferred under the collective bargaining agreement under the sheriff's office. So effectively have very similar protections for employment that officers currently have under our collective bargaining agreement with the city.
Right. I'm sorry, can you not hear me very well?
You're muffled.
It's baffled. A little jumbled.
All right. So I'll try to speak louder. So you're, the, most of the employees transferred would be transferred into union positions with CCSO. They have a different contract, but not the same contract terms. But most union contracts have similar job protection terms such as just cause, the ability to agree protections for public safety officers during the course of administrative investigations and interviews and so forth. So most of the transferred employees would transfer into collective bargaining positions with the sheriff's office.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Counselor Grayson.
I have a question back on page 68, 1F. We're just talking about bargaining, et cetera. And this is a little bit different, but I'm just hoping that we can make the distinction. It says, would the City of Scapoo's have a seat at the table when CBAs are being bargained or any other process that could cause cost increase to the city greater than an agreed percentage? And the sheriff's response was no, as this is a contract between Columbia County and the union. And I don't know if there's someone that can speak to us about what CBAs are and what that bargaining looks like and what it would look like not to have a seat at the table during those bargains? Dave, I don't, Ashley?
Yes, I can speak to that. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah. So we would not have a seat at that table for collective bargaining purposes. The sheriff's absolutely correct that the sheriff's office would bargain directly with their bargaining unit and make decisions regarding, you know, costs and benefits. And my understanding is that those costs, however we arrange this agreement, would be passed along to the city. So no, we would not have a role in supervising employees.
Okay, thank you, Ashley.
Yeah, there is, there would be a notification requirement if anticipated costs were to exceed 3%. The current CBA with the sheriff's office will not expire until June of 2025. So there would not be significant anticipated service costs, personnel costs, potentially until that point. And we are about to go into our own collective bargaining agreement with our police union, and we should expect increased personnel costs coming from that. Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Counselor President Grayson.
I have a question for Dave. On page 67, 1D and 1E, it talks about the formula for annual fee and services and translated into actual costs. And then how, talking about escalating annual costs, would we have any control over annual fee increases? They talk about capping it, not to, for example, not to exceed 10% of the previous year. Can you talk to us about what that would look like for our budgeting process, how we currently do it?
For full transparency, if it was Public Works, I could easily answer that. I don't do the, I mean, as you know, I'm interim.
Yep.
I don't do the police's budget. Do you elaborate a little more on what?
I'm just wondering, having a 10% increase, what that would do to our, our budget? Not anticipating that, and then all of a sudden that comes on? I mean, I know we budget pretty, how would you say it?
Conservative.
We're pretty conservative in our budgeting anyways, but.
One thing, there one thing I will touch to here.
Okay.
Anything in excess of the 3% that the fund grows is going backward. General fund grows at 3% annually. So if, if rates are going up faster than that, you've got to make that up in a different manner.
Okay.
You are going to slowly.
And are we currently increasing, I'm looking across the board of our actual spending. It doesn't seem to me that we're increasing by 10% historically.
Well, for as far as, and, and I would love the lieutenant to chime in when he feels appropriate. But I have seen that the police has put a large push the past couple of years in their infrastructure as far as their, their police cars and equipment. I feel like they were in a deficit and over the last couple of years, they've put a big push to catch that up. I feel like they're in a more healthy position now, so they may be able to level out some of their infrastructure costs, if you will. Looking at the budget, I don't know if this is exactly where you're going, but there's, there's some situations in the most recent years. And unfortunately, with the turning of events of our staffing, with the chief leaving, we can't understand why the choices were made in the previous budget. So I would be going on historic numbers for costs, not trying to understand. I don't know if that's exactly where you're going, but things can be managed in a level manner. Like I said, I, I feel like the police department has put a big infrastructure push. So moving forward, I don't, I don't know enough at this juncture to fully answer your question, but.
I mean, I do see that historically, over the last few years, we're budgeting 2.4, 2.5, 2.7, 2.8, but our actual spending is only 1.8, 1.9, 1.8?
That's correct.
Okay. Million.
So, and so I guess I made a couple of notes here just for moving forward for staff, for next steps. And what I'm hearing is a desire for 24/365. The question is, is that the desired outcome? I believe it is. So next steps for the city would be to do a cost analysis to figure out what that would look like within our own in-house ability. I, I believe that's the question on the table here is, can we match services with the county and who's the cheapest? That exercise has not been done on the city's behalf. This is a new, new thing, as you've mentioned, coming to the table. And I would encourage that we work with Mr. Jensen and current staff to build you that assessment and do an apples-to-apples compares.
I also think that the definition of 24/7/365 coverage is needing to be agreed upon by the majority because we currently do have that. It's just not in the definition of two officers, their bodies in a car or in city hall. So the definition does need to be determined as well.
And that's something for the community and council to determine what that picture looks like and what the needs are. I think that there's probably, once again, I'm a Public Works guy, but there's statistics that need to come forward of when do the crimes occur? You know, what time do you need that staffing to be that? Maybe it's one, a certain hour. I don't know what that looks like. So, once again, I think that just doing an apples-to-apples comparison, if I'm understanding the, the, of this exercise, it hasn't been done and that's your next step.
Yes.
Yeah, I would like to see that definitely. And then see the costs and the expectations and then go to the citizens and say, is that what you want, that what we'd like to get to?
Anybody looking at the graphs have seen in this past year, there was a large spike in the budget.
We'd like to look at.
Rebuilding, we're training, we're paying for people to go to school.
But the expenses is high, we just budgeted really high.
Correct. And I, I just want to make a clarification about this slide that's up right now. You look back 10 years, you'll see a fairly consistent increase in prices. This is very common across departments. In the 23-24 year, at the time that we made the budget, things were looking very good. We had a new chief, we had a lot of positions to fill, and we knew we were going to be incurring some extra costs. So we budgeted over what we believed we needed in order to be able to work within that budget. This was a one-time increase. This was not intended to be the norm. And you can tell by looking at the graph and a basic analysis that we have done a very good job at keeping our costs low. So going back to what Lieutenant said earlier, you know, we have achieved 24/7 coverage before with two bodies. So going back to what Lieutenant said earlier, you know, we have achieved twenty-four, seven coverage before with two bodies in the city or under two million within this time period, not in the last year. And so I too would be in favor of doing a real cost analysis because the way I look at it, this two point eight million this year is the outlier. And that, from a pure statistical standpoint, that is not a good number to be looking at for our projections going forward.
Carol was gonna come up with a, um, up to this point, did we ever see any expenses up to this point yet? Ashley?
Um, I have that.
Um, Mayor, are you calling on me with my hand up or a specific question?
Did you, oh, your hand was up. I'm sorry, Ashley.
I, I do have currents and projectives.
I just want to go. I want to go back to a comment that was made earlier. Um, can you hear me clearly?
Yes.
Okay. So I went back and looked at the Intergovernmental Transfer of Employees Act. Um, so we're referencing that the employee would stay employed for twelve months period. And the statute does discuss twelve months. And what that is, is the employee's salary and benefits will be held, held stable for a twelve month period. And then the employees be transferred over so long as the position exists with the receiving employee, employer. In this case, because there's, would be assuming our entire police department, um, the expectation is that all those, those positions would exist at the county. But there is no guarantee for a twelve month period that they have to keep everybody employed for that period of time. Um, but what I did say still stands, which is most employees will transfer over as union employees. And despite that, or, you know, after that twelve month period where their benefits are stayed the same, they will go under the benefits of the collective bargaining agreement over at the county. So I just wanted to make those clarifying points.
Thank you. Um, so the apples to apples comparison would be great for our next step of exploration. But I do want to make it clear, this is not just about numbers, which parlay's us into our last section before we have some public comment, which is administration of services. So we've asked, we want to make sure that there would be quality services being given to the city. So we've asked a question about citizen complaints over the past two years. Um, and if we can have access to those, um, complaints, which that would be a priority on my list to dig further into in the next round of discovery. Um, what is the, what is the quality of service being delivered to the folks of unincorporated areas of Columbia County? Um, and, uh, if there are some problem areas, perhaps they will come up with citizen complaints. Other, uh, you know, uh, an expectation that they maintain a level of presence at Scapoose community events. We've had officers at movies in the park, um, presence at Earth Day. And the community is, it's really important, I think, for both sides of the equation, the community and our officers. And this is a point that I think often does get overlooked in contracting arrangements. So that would be another sticking point, at least for me personally, um, that we, we maintain, um, a level of community policing here. So just reinforce that it's, this is not all about the numbers. This is about making sure that personnel would also be treated well and, um, that, you know, our community would be well taken care of on a number of levels um, if we were to pursue this. Any questions or comments on that final section, administration of services?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I have a question either for Ashley or Chris. What is the implications, the liability of using, um, the GPS tool to show the time spent within city limits? And how do you, um, how do you define, uh, what they're going outside of city limits for? And how do you justify that they've gone beyond the line? Um, do we go back and look at the calls that they were making? They were transferring someone to the jail. How does that? How does that look like? Like, what is?
Um, uh, Council President, I refer to Ashley, Isaac, I refer to Ashley first, and I could talk to you certain situations that have happened in the past. Why officers may leave the city.
Sure.
Um, of Scapoose.
Ashley.
Yeah, I think that's something that we are gonna have to give some, some time and consideration to. Uh, Lieutenant is absolutely right. You know, just because somebody is patrolling the city of Scapoose does not mean that there aren't going to be occasions where they need to leave. You know, they may need to go to court up in St. Helens. They may be on an assist call right out of city limits. I completely understand, um, the council's desire to have that information, but I think we'd have to look at it. We'd have to scrutinize it and how we're using it and ensure that it is used how we intend it and we're capturing those events that are part of the, um, an officer's routine duties to leave the city of Scapoose.
Thank you.
I guess.
Good.
Further council discussion? Yeah, let's open it up.
Okay, let's, um, got a few, uh, forums here that I'm gonna go through. If you do, did not fill one out and do want to speak, please grab a pink sheet and just name and address and, and, and give it to Susan and we'll get you up here. Um, we still have Dan online. Um, and I'm gonna start, order of receive, we'll go with Dustin Hald. And on this one, um, let's, can I get two people up here stationed, kind of ready so we can go a little quicker for you guys? Drew Lada also on deck. You can pick any microphone and just have Drew up here too, and then we'll just go.
Stand or sit or what's?
Whatever you want. Um, just main thing is microphone so they can hear you online. Um, I was gonna limit this to three minutes if we can. And again, try, you know, would try to, I want to go through as many of these as we have to, so I'd rather not repeat questions. If you hear your question asked, uh, maybe change it. Um, but we, we want to hear as many, as, from as many as you possible. Um, I'm gonna go ahead and just, yes, uh, just go ahead and go. I'll watch it here.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, uh, ladies and gentlemen of the council, my name is Dustin Hald. I spent twenty-four years in law enforcement, tired, I'm here in Columbia County. First four years was here with the city of Scapoose and the last twenty was with the sheriff's office. I was part of the, the contract with, with Klascani PD when I was with sheriff's office. Um, it definitely did not benefit the city of, of Klascani. We knew, drawing the contract, that it was gonna cost too much money to, for them to ever to come back and try to get their own police department back. Um, I was not in favor of that as a sheriff's commander. Um, I think you're making a mistake if you, if you do this.
Thank you.
You know, it sounds great having twenty-four, seven coverage and officers in the city limits all the time. The reality of that is, it's not gonna happen. Your, your deputies, your officers are gonna turn into deputies. Those deputies are going to be on Vernonia Highway. They're gonna be on Cater Hill. They're gonna be in Chapman, uh, taking property crimes. And they're gonna be filling schedules where there's a hole or a vacation or maternity leave or something around the entire county. Um, as part of my job as commander with sheriff's office, I spent a lot of time explaining to the city, uh, city people in Klascani why their deputies were not in the city when they called nine-one-one. You know, Ms. Holmes has talked about comparing apples to apples. She brought up, brought up Rockaway Beach. That's not apples to apples. That's a city of a little over a thousand people. We have close to nine thousand people here in Scapoose now. So, um, I urge you to not go along with this program. It is not a good deal for the city. It's gonna cost you millions of dollars to get your police department back. And, and knowing that as, as a commander with sheriff's office, we knew that city was never coming back. We knew that they were stuck with sheriff's office. I don't know why Sheriff Pixley is not here. In my, in my speaking opposed to this is no slight at Sheriff Pixley at all or anybody exploring this option. I'm just telling you, you need to support your own officers, your, your own people. You have you have great people here right now that want to do a good job for you. And they need your support. If you can give them more people, more support, you are gonna foster that, that, um, they're gonna stay here. They're gonna want to be here and they're gonna want to work. And I know that's been a problem with, with the city as well as the county. It's not just a unique Scapoose city of losing, losing, losing people. The sheriff's office has lost a bunch too. So keep your people, support your people. That's all I have to say.
I appreciate it. Uh, Dustin.
One, the one thing I do ask is the person to speak only, I mean, I appreciate the comments held back there. If you do want to speak, come up and I'd be, I'd love to hear you speak. But, um, we're, we want to try to get through this and just please courtesy is, is the loud noises and stuff, if we could just keep those to a minimum. I'd love to hear you all speak.
Just a quick point of clarification. We did not ask for Sheriff Pixley to come, so it is not on any decision of himself. We felt that this being our first public discussion, it was best for us to just go ahead and have that.
And Drew, I'll let you, Justin, you up next. Drew.
Okay, uh, Drew Lada. I, uh, live, uh, highway thirty, just outside of city limits. Uh, our marina was in the promotional video that you guys are putting forward. So is the police sign twice. Uh, city having its own police department is more than a matter of prestige. Is it, it's, it's a matter of you guys having a say over the law enforcement services that are being provided. Scapoose, I gotta say it, is in a pretty good position compared to some of the other cities I've visited in our district. Right now, working with the city of St. Helens, try and make sure that they can get their officers funded. St. Helens is actually in a whole lot heck of a worse position than you guys are right now. And the conversation to replace their police department with the sheriff's office has not even been broached. They're in a worse position than you, and they understand the importance of maintaining their own municipal law enforcement. I gotta say, it sounds like you have pretty close to twenty-four hour coverage already. And if I was Sheriff Pixley, I'd be kind of looking at this deal, uh, as a fortuitous thing. I mean, step one is they acquire what, quarter, third of a million dollars worth of equipment? You guys own that now. This is your department. We have a department, you guys have say over it. And I gotta be honest, so far as the departments go, I have a really high opinion of the officers serving in Scapoose. To the point, if I find, remember that I didn't lock my car door when I go into Fred Meyer's in twenty twenty-four, I don't freak out and run back out to the car to lock it because we live in Scapoose. It's one of the safest areas in our district, and it's so largely because of the officers that have devoted their life and service to this city. And I think it would be a major disservice to them to shut the city down and a major disservice to you and any of successors that, that have to manage this city five years. Let's look at the St. Helens, or let's look at the sheriff's bond. It, it expires five years from passage. It's gonna expire a year before your contract does. And, and the previous speaker, uh, bless his soul, he's absolutely right. If you give the Scapoose Police Department away, the chances of getting it back are less than getting struck by lightning twice, same day, same city. So I don't envy any of your positions. I, I understand that this is a very difficult decision, but I think that right now you have one of, if not the best police department in our district. Uh, the community engagement is fantastic. People feel safe here. And even if it means, you know, apps adding money onto a utility fee or introducing a levy, having your own law enforcement that answers to you is something I don't think you should be grateful about.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Drew. And I guess, um, we're just signing a clock up here. We're trying to keep it to three minutes so we can go through as many as possible. Um, I do appreciate that, Drew. I mean, I have been here over forty years and I agree with a lot of those things. I mean, that's why I'm here. And that's why I don't lock my door at night. I've never have. Don't need to. We're in Scapoose. And so it definitely, I, I really, some of the comments do get to me that it's, it's not personal. I mean, I believe we do have the best officers around and the best department. I do believe that. And that's why I'm here for you guys, is try to make, keep it, make it better. We have a retention issue. And that is, there's many facets to that. We have to figure out what that is. And this was one of the options that we looked at and, and, and we brought up. So I appreciate it and we'll continue on. Justin and, um, we'll go. Dan, you're up next.
No, Dan.
Online, he's online, Isaac, sorry.
So my name is Justin Stevenson and I'm a resident of Scapoose. I'm gonna be a little more, um, difficult in regards to being able to speak in specifics. I'm a sergeant here of Scapoose. Um, I have twenty-eight years of law enforcement experience and I'm the longest tenured sworn member of this police department. I'm speaking on my behalf. I'm not on duty, but I want to make sure you guys have some information that I think that you're missing and you need to know about it. Um, in my history, just so you understand, I was a patrol commander, lieutenant and captain. Uh, I managed twenty-five, um, members of a, of a department. So I've gone through a lot of the same types of things that we've had to do as, as a chief. So I have a little different background in that regard. Um, history, how did we get here and why are we at this, this juncture trying to make a decision? Since two thousand and thirteen, we went through twenty-five sworn cops in this department. At an average cost of about a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars to lose that member of this organization, the city's wasted about one, four point three million dollars. So that's kind of where we're at right now and why we're at a low staffing situation. Um, and we're trying to figure out what we need to do. And it was due to poor leadership that were hired and retained. Um, information was brought forth to management and at that time, decisions were made or ignored and it created the situation we have right now. So one of the issues we have is financial. We have a very poor collective bargaining agreement that was, um, signed by a chief and an officer that already gave a notice to leave. No union attorneys on either side were involved. And it's only been eleven, eleven point, uh, five percent of a cost adjustment over the last five years. Right now, looking at all the comparables, we're about twenty-five to thirty percent behind comparable agencies. I looked at nineteen agencies within twenty-five miles that have openings right now and we're at minimum twenty-five percent behind. And I have hard data and details and all that kind of stuff. I'm trying to, you know, get through in your guys' timeframe. Um, so in regards to, since I've been here the longest, I can tell you that twelve cops do not get you twenty-four, seven, two-on. We've never had that. Uh, when I came here, we, I've never been fully staffed since I've been here. However, we did have ten cops, uh, dedicated patrol at one given time in the city that has a graveyard officer that works by himself from two or three o'clock in the morning. So there was two on and that was, we could do it with the ten designated patrol positions, eight officers and two sergeants right now. We need twenty-four, seven, two-on for law enforcement. We should be at sixteen sworn based upon industry standards, CIS, FBI, everybody that gives us standards, it's two per thousand for cops. We should be at sixteen, we're at twelve. Proposals fourteen, it's one point seven, we're getting closer. Um, when I looked through everything, I went through all the budgeting, our actual budget is much different than obviously as we previously talked about. It's about one point eight million dollars is where we should actually come in this budget year for actual personnel services. Thirty percent behind in pay, that takes us to our actual existing approved budget. So we have to take care of that. The sheriff's office is fifteen percent higher than us right now anyway, so there's gonna be that absorption to it. So that's one of the issues that we would already have to contend with. If we're gonna add roughly four additional positions, which would get us to where we want to get, it's about seven hundred thousand dollars. And add another percentage of, uh, material and services and contracts, but a hundred thousand, maybe eight hundred thousand dollars to get us. We need to be, we don't have any more money, so obviously we're gonna have to look for a levy or other resource of, of income to do that. That's gonna be the same way for the sheriff's office. Going to the sheriff's office language, um, increasing the fourteen to sworn, we are losing fifty hours of command staff on a daily basis, weekly basis. Um, we're losing a chief's position, we're losing a lieutenant by, by ten hours a week. I can tell you right now that we definitely have a need to have that much administrative oversight for when we had the full staff. Um, so thinking all those into consideration and then continuing on the sheriff's languages. Again, I don't have a problem with, with Sheriff Pixley either, um, but I believe that there's some major issues. We already talked about the cars. Look at their, look at his language. He wants ten additional patrol cars, seventy-three thousand dollars apiece. There's seven hundred and thirty thousand dollars. You know, we need to eight hundred thousand dollars to just keep our police department our own and continue to go. And the expense of that kind of vehicles, you know, letting people within twenty-five miles of the, of the county and commute. I mean, that's a pretty significant amount of money where we're paying that we normally would not be paying. Um, and I, I can tell I'm the last, I'm the last cop that has a contract that I, I'm required to live within ten miles of the city hall. All, all command staff and management supervisors had that requirement when I came here. I was on call. I obviously could respond to something. We have people that do live thirty and forty minutes away, you know, right now that are through an on-call. That's not reasonable if you call nine-one-one and someone's raking in your house. Um, and, and that's not ideal. You know, the goal is to get here, but we have those problems with wages to be competitive to keep our staff. Um, I have a, a large concern about the fact that, you know, we, we're not going out to do a RFP in the future. We can't. We have no one else to, to go to, to ask to consider taking over. We can't. We have no one else to go to to ask to consider taking over law enforcement coverages. If the sheriff's office doesn't work, you know, he's an elected position every four years. If something changes on his regard, you know, if we lose, we don't have the ability to go back without a lot of money and a lot of time, and neither of those we probably have to give. So if we lose this police department, and we try to come back to it, it's essentially an epic failure. We will not be able to do it. We cannot compare ourselves to agencies that had, you know, Klatskanen example, they had a five-person police department for 2,500 people. It was disbanded for reason, and the sheriff's office came in to help them. We're not in that position. You know, all these other departments, we can't look at Monuma County, Washington County, Clackamas County departments that picked up these other cities because they're literally hundreds of cops. Sheriff's office up until the levy only had basically, I think, eight general deputies assigned to patrol. There's a complete difference in that realm. And, you know, just trying to make sure I'm covering the last few things here, and I'll get done. District courts are a big issue. I don't think it's appropriate to have to have our citizens go to Vernonia to justice court for simple tickets. I think that DA's office is currently understaffed. They're going through a complete shakeup. They can't take another 12 cops producing workload to produce criminal acts that we'd have to send over there. And losing that control of our city ordinances and livability issues that we have, that we take care of as a city police department, it's much different than a county sheriff's office. I think would be a huge loss to us, and we can't get back. And the bottom line is, there's three officers, three sworn personnel that were in process to leave the sheriff's office in December until we had the city manager and the police chief give notice, and they rescinded that interest, showing you that they didn't have an interest to pursue going to the sheriff's office. I know of three personal existing staff that would leave if we went to the sheriff's office. So you're gonna have to have nine or 10 positions filled by the sheriff's office to fulfill this contract. You can't get it done in a year. I mean, it's nothing against him personally. You just can't hire 10 cops that are gonna be essentially entry-level police officers and expect that they're gonna be here in a year running the city. They won't. So these are just things that I appreciate. I think we need to have this conversation because we do need to make sure, we're looking to say, how did we get here? And let's not repeat the same problem. We have a new city manager gonna be coming on. We're gonna have a new police chief coming on. And it's time for you guys, as a new council, compared to the old council that was involved in the previous decisions, they can right the ship and make sure we get a right police department to take care of our community and our citizens, as well as the staff that come here. So we'd actually have cops retire from here. We don't, we haven't had that. And it's time that we get a police department we can have that from. And that's the most important piece, is just looking at our current future that we need and want. And I believe this community supports us, and they will continue to do so as long as we provide them the result from what we're doing for them is appropriate. Appreciate your time.
Justin, can you submit any of that to us?
I do. I have it in writing, so I can give it.
Send it to city manager, for sure.
We'll do so.
And we've got, go, Dan, and then Jeremy, you're up on deck.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and city councilors. My name is Dan Tenell. I am the general counsel for the Oregon FOP, and the Oregon FOP Labor Coalition is who represents your Police Officers Guild. Your guild is part of 35, 34 other police departments in this state that collectively bargain through the coalition of the FOP. You need to know, just for transparency's sake, that I also do the bargaining for the county and the city of St. Helens. Your Police Officers Guild is absolutely against this proposal. And I'm gonna point out, maybe bluntly for some of you, things that you've missed in bringing this initial exploratory to us. First of all, you will never rebuild a police department if you lose it. The startup costs in personnel, equipment, and training, you can't afford it, and you will not be able to in our lifetime. If you give up your police department, you will not get it back. Secondly, and one of the things in the sheriff's proposal, which unfortunately I only saw tonight, and it wasn't provided to the guild in advance, you need to ask the sheriff if he's giving you the budget numbers based on his costs of his employees versus the costs in the St. Helens contract. As Justin very eloquently pointed out, your officers in the city are grossly underpaid. I don't know, I wasn't involved in the negotiation of the prior existing collective bargaining agreement. There will, there has to be major revisions to that, and there has to be significant pay raises if you want to continue to keep people. In terms of retention, did you ask the sheriff how many deputies have left the sheriff's office in the last five or six years? And why have those people left? Okay? You don't have that data in there.
You do, Dan, on that. I do have that data. If you did put that here.
I am very frustrated that none of you have sought out the position of the guild at this point, up before tonight. Your current employees do not want to become deputies of the sheriff's office. You presently have no one in the hiring process. You think you can do 24-hour policing with 12 people. You currently have five patrol officers. You've got a lieutenant. You've got one sergeant. You've got a chief that's not certified and is acting as a public safety director. And you have no one in the hiring process. It will take at least one year, if not closer to 18 months, to hire a brand-new police officer, put them into the academy if you can get a close spot, put them through the DPSST Academy, put them through a fully compliant field training program. And if you need to add five or six people, I bet you, if you started with the sheriff's office tonight, you would not have a fully-staffed police department in five years. Have you asked how many people in the hiring process the sheriff's office has? Are they fully staffed? How long has the sheriff's office actually had 24/7 patrols? I don't think you've asked that question, and I think you should ask that question. How many people could leave the sheriff's office before they would lose the ability to patrol the county outside of the areas 24 hours a day, seven days a week? Has anybody from this council gone to Vernonia? Have you gone to Klatskanen? And have you asked the small businesses and the teachers and the community members, are you seeing deputies enough? Are you seeing deputies as much as you've expected them to under the contracts that exist with the sheriff's office now? That hasn't been done, from what I can tell. Some of you have thankfully talked about the bargaining relationship that exists between your current employees and what is going to happen if they go to the county. Is their vacation accruals going to be fair? Are they gonna get credit for the years of service they served with the city of Scappus? Are they gonna get credit for that longevity? Those are not guarantees. That's gonna have to be bargained with the Sheriff's Deputies Association, who may or may not want to absorb these people. Has anybody from the council reached out to the Sheriff Deputy Sheriff's Association to see what their position is about incorporating in potentially 10 or 12 new employees into their guild? That hasn't been done. As Justin pointed out, you've lost 25 police officers in 2014. I'm sure some of you remember some of my prior statements on behalf of guilds in the past. You've had bad leadership in the police department, which is attributed to that. If the city will get in a good police chief and pay their officers close to market rate and stabilize their police department, these issues will stop. But I think on behalf of the association, you're gonna have to be brave and invest in your own police department. It's not gonna work well if you try to contract with the sheriff's office.
Thank you, Dan. See you there. Right.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I make a motion that council extends the council meeting past 9 o'clock.
We have a motion to extend the meeting past 9 o'clock. If we do go past 9, we have to make a motion and to extend it. We have a motion by Counselor Miller in seconds.
Second.
Counselor Holmes seconded it. Any discussion? All those in favor, say by saying aye. Aye. Close. Meeting continues. Okay, Jeremy?
Thank you for not cutting me off. So my name's Jeremy Hazencamp. I actually grew up in the area. Went to Scappus High School. I've actually been involved with the police department since about 1992, back when I was a cadet, came up through the ranks. And I guess what I've always noticed about Scappus is that they've had a large majority of their police officers have lived within the community and have participated in the community. There was a break. I went to the state police, and I've seen that kind of change. And when you look at the number of police officers that have left, it has been because of poor leadership and pay. There's a lot of guys that actually started in law enforcement in this area who've gone to metro agencies but still lived in the area. I think that it would have been, had they gone back and the pay would have been commensurate, some of the opportunities that were there for Scappus to be involved in other entities, like there used to be in the days of the Scent Team and, you know, when we had, actually had drug teams, you know, there would be a lot more longevity here in the department. I think that, you know, there's a lot of repair to do to the police department. I think you have some very good staff here. And I really think that before you go looking at other proposals, I think you guys should consider, if sheriff's deputies are 15% above where your Scappus police officers are, I highly recommend paying them commensurate to that and seeing what you can build here with what you have. Your staffing here, I've seen it. I'm in the private sector now, and I think even my officers work armed security, and I think they're actually making more than your police officers with a lot less responsibility. And so I can't stress enough, before you go looking at proposals, go within your police department, see what you can do to build a relationship there. You've got a lot of good staff there, and I think that you've got a really good, now that some of the things have changed, you are going to retain more staff. If you can fix the pay issue, you can also get a lot of folks that are trying to get out of the metro area to bring in laterals, to bring in more, more experience to help your officers that are out here that are younger in their tenure. Anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes, we did do a study right before our time. They did do a study on pay, and it came back as comparable to other cities our size, and we all understand that's not who we're competing with. We compete with Monuma County, Columbia County, Washington County, St. Helens. We get that. And so we understand that, and we believe that that is a big issue. And I, we wanna try that, but we also understand we have a budget and we're within it, but I want to do everything we can to fix that. Because retention is a big issue. We heard a study. It's $200,000 or more every time you lose an officer, up to hire a new one. And we get that. We have had a lot of retention issues and pay. Don't we have over 80-plus police officers and safety, living in our community that work elsewhere? We have a lot of people that live here, and they know it's a great area, and they work in the law enforcement in other areas, and we get that as well. So we want to build a strong safety, you know, police department that covers Scappus. And so this was a discovery period of getting some information. We appreciate all the input. You know, we do read the Facebooks too, and we do see some input there, so we appreciate it. Is there anything else we want to cover tonight? Is there another step? Are we looking at? Yeah, I'm sorry. I got all my public comment. I didn't see any more on board. If I missed you, let me know, but I think I got them all. Close that portion, but we want to tell, what is our next step? I did hear a couple of questions about getting at least some numbers from our local departments and just seeing. Be interested in any other information? Continuing for staff.
Yep, so that would be the ask. You know, is the information presented compelling enough to continue to go down this path of exploration, recognizing it does take our time and staff time to respond to these requests? Or do we feel we've learned enough and want to, you know, just focus on the PD right now, but also recognizing that we've got changing dynamics there as well? I myself would like to know all of our options as we move forward, so I would be in favor of continuing to gather information. Just so we've got that option to fall back on if we would ever need it.
And to me, this isn't just exploring whether we contract. It's exploring options for achieving. We have a bargaining coming up with, if we do this, we have to figure out ways to improve our own department. So getting these numbers, finding out what it would take. We have a town meeting coming up, and this is a possible subject, doing some surveys with our community, figuring out what you guys are willing to pay for. Because if we determine that 14 officers, you want that 24/7, then it is gonna cost, and there, we would look within our budget, but our budget's only so thick. We're gonna have to maybe look at levies. We want to hear that. So not are we really pursuing Columbia County, we're also looking at all these options. So I would be willing to listen to some more numbers and just seeing within our own department where we are. There's ways that we can prove upon that.
I mean, I have more to say, but go ahead.
Okay. So I think the phase two that we had always anticipated was to work with the Scappus Police Department and get the numbers to see what apples-to-apples would look like, so that we could do a side-by-side comparison and make sure that we're all on the same page, all talking about the same things. I think we do need to figure out, though, like Council President Grayson said, are, you know, what does 24/7/365 coverage mean? So we need to define, I think, right now, this council does, does that mean that we have two on-duty, on-p patrol in the city limits at all times? Or what exactly does that mean? Because that's going to shape our comparison. And if we can do a side-by-side and get to 24/7/365 on-duty coverage, whatever we define that mean, and then we can put that out to everybody to see side-by-side, I think that that's, that'll be the information that everybody needs to see to make an educated decision.
I would like to see the number, 24/7, two officers on duty within the city. Yes, they're gonna be going to the jail. They're gonna be outside of the city from time, but they're dedicated to the city every shift, 24/7. How many officers would it take as a local police department to cover every shift? Understanding there is gonna be, you know, leaves and there's vacations, and then do we offer that person on-call, or do we offer overtime? I mean, I don't know how that would handle, you know, are we looking at just the minimum amount of people to cover the shifts? I think that's what they did. They offered the minimum amount they thought would cover it. Didn't build in extra because they knew there was always gonna be somebody on vacation or sick. I would like to maybe see those numbers. And see, within our budget, if our budget doesn't allow that, what will it take for us to get there?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
A couple of different things, just looking back at the 10-year timeline of the PD spending. It fluctuates that we are coming under by 200 to sometimes a million dollars on our spending. So I think if we can look at how we're projecting, I think that that can help us tighten up a little bit and figure out how we can offer more compensation consistently and not having those big fluctuations. What is, Justin spoke about it, and maybe Ashley can talk to the liability of it, or Lieutenant can, about the actual need for two officers physically present, working, not being on-call? What does that mean in terms of safety for you or the need for that when responding to calls? It sounds like elsewhere, a lot of officers respond by themselves. So that reality doesn't seem to be everywhere, and that's something that we're trying to make here, but is that really something that's doable? If we do have this on-call coverage, or at least an officer, is that as good as we can get, or should, what more should we be?
Thank you for the question, Captain Grayson. Obviously, we have more officers, three or four per shift. That'll be great. Be more time to do proactive work, respond to different incidents, to have more backups. Not a bad thing. Going back to 24-hour coverage was a big thing. My calculation was with incorporating myself and the chief as working, you have pretty much three shifts on each side of the week, from Sunday to Wednesday, requires myself and the chief working. And also, it's only three shift from 7 to 7 for 24 hours. That would get that coverage there. Definitely not ideal 100% when it comes out to it. You're talking about having an additional officer there. Additional officer will give the opportunity if one officer is tied up with a large criminal investigation, such as DUI, that may take six hours sometimes, give that officer opportunity to go ahead and have one person still in the city while they process that criminal investigation. And obviously, having more backup, having additional officer on scene is always a good thing for particular volatile situations we can face. But I can tell you, though, from law enforcement from all across the country, though, it's challenged no matter where you go. I think Scappus will continue to have that. I think for us, though, in my personal opinion, just being for over a year, retention, doing good, hiring good personnel to begin with, I think we can start working towards that process to have good people.
I think we can start working towards that process to have good people serve the community here. Makes sense. Council President.
So it's not necessarily a state requirement and we're missing the mark?
No, there's no state required to my knowledge requires that.
Thank you.
I just, I just, I just want to say what I'm hearing. And thank you all for your comments and thank you all for the ones, your expertise. And this was very informative for me. Obviously, what I see that there's a lot of questions came up and I think that was the purpose of the exercise, which is great. I also hearing that we can invest in our own department, but there's a need for money. So whether we love our officers, it doesn't matter, it comes down to money. Do we have enough money to increase their pay 15, 25 to 30%? Because that's what I'm hearing that we're under. You know, our officers, it, you know, you guys have to make a living, I get it. We are competing with bigger cities. And so ultimately, we need to figure out if, and Dave, if that comparison would be great. Just to have the numbers for me, it's just to make sure that we can budget, increase and invest in our department. Or what's the other option? So like Counselor Holmes, I'm open to exploring, knowing all of my options before making a decision. And so, I mean, and if you guys were all voting for a levy, I'm sure you guys will repass the levy. So know that you might have to go out for money, just, you know, just to let you guys know.
Yes, I'm getting a straw poll to see if we are warrant another little round of discovery that's more directed. I don't know if, you know, if there's questions for Columbia County, we might look at getting some of those answered. But it seems like most of them are focused on our own police department.
Oh, excuse me, a little under the weather, all of them. Way in just for a minute, I appreciate the public coming out, very helpful getting that feedback. I want to thank, excuse me, my fellow councilors for exploring this option. I'm not opposed to looking more into it. But just full disclosure, this is not convincing enough. Look to go in that direction. I'd like to look at a little bit more and have a support.
So thank you everyone for coming out. I personally appreciate the public participation. It's what actually helps make and move government forward. So with the topic of tonight, so I am open for us understanding what our options are holistically. Being a member of this council, we have a fiduciary responsibility to ensure that we are good stewards of our money and that we are adhering to public safety standards as well. So I want to understand what our options are if we were to contract. So I am for exploring further based off input from the public, specifically certain topics that Dan, who's with the guild, had pointed out, as well as a few of others in the audience. To just get more clarification regarding, just to get more specific. And we always did know that we need to do a side by side comparison and that we're at that point where we need to also do a comparison and understand where we currently are and where we need to go in order to be properly staffed and retain our police department here. So I also understand that we need to come up with a definition of what 24/7 policing. And I think what I'm, what I've heard is that there's a feeling that we would like to have two on shift to obtain 24/7. However, the reality is in the profession is that that's not always the case. So I would like to propose this, that we need to look at what a potential future would look like and what it would cost to have the ideal state of two on shift, 24/7. What would that look like in terms of how long and what the cost would be versus what is more standard in the profession? What that looks like and how long it will take and how much that costs. And I will close with, following up on Counselor Santiago. There is going to be a financial component. And you will be presented with what those financial components may or may not be. And I look forward to seeing your participation and dialogue when we present that. Because we are all in this together and we have to make the right decisions to get what we want. So thank you all for coming tonight.
Great. I guess if the general sentiment is to carry it forward, I would propose that I will, I will go ahead and review the recording of the meeting, try to capture as many questions and additional points of information from council discussion and everything that the public has brought here. I will work with staff to get that side by side comparison of kind of the max level of service and then maybe more practical level of service so that we can understand that. I would ask if my fellow councilors have additional questions to maybe get those emailed to me by the end of the week. My goal would be that first, if the agenda allows, the first meeting of March, we would be able to make that additional round of information public and repeat this process and I hope you all can join us.
Dave, any input?
Yeah, well, I've taken lots of notes. I think I understand the next steps, you know, I think that at this juncture, this will be obviously city manager layman's and but I'm clearly hearing that we kind of want to look at the coverage, how we can get there. If we can't get there, what would they recommend that we do? What the cost of that would be so that you have a better understanding of that. We're coming into our budget season in the next few months, so those numbers will start to get pulled together. Priority, I guess for timeline, I don't know what your next steps timeline are. If you're talking a couple of months, I will say, just speaking outside the box here, that I don't think we're going to well, which is getting the chief on boarded with this current status. I don't know that any chief would have any desire to look this direction at the moment. But the CBA is another factor and I'm not 100% sure when that's coming in, but bargaining will affect costs. So I, once again, another thing for us to consider. So there's a lot of moving parts. I don't know how big a hurry we are here, but lots of notes for them to move forward.
Would like to bring more information back to our first March meeting. Hopefully, that would hopefully give us some good information. Lieutenant Fuellen or Jensen, did he come back online? Do you know the next bargaining? I mean.
Yeah, we're going to be entering bargaining eminently. I mean, this, we can't put that off, we've been noticed. So regardless.
Do you have a date?
I don't think there's an exact date yet. But it is, it is coming presently and we will be meeting and we can't really put that off. And Dave's right, we're not going to be able to even think about hiring for a chief till this is well in the rearview. Ashley's on, I'm sure she can put more on to that if you want her to. But to be blunt, we can't hire anybody for the police department right now. This needs to be like done deal and not in the back pocket. I think, I think to get a chief, we're going to need to close this.
That right, Ashley, bargaining could be starting soon.
Yeah, we got notice from the guild back in December and we've been trying to figure out dates to start bargaining ever since then. I am hopeful that we can, Dan and I can resolve and get some dates on the calendar very soon here.
I'm available to start tomorrow. I'm, I got, I'm wide open tomorrow. I've been out in Columbia County two days in a row, I'll come out a third, just tell me the time.
And we too definitely want to move on this too. It's unfortunately, we only meet twice a month and we can't get together outside of here. So some things take a little bit of time. But I hope, in questions, if people do have questions, comments, they can email me. But hopefully we'll have questions that you want us to answer. We'll come back at our first March meeting and that should be good. Anything else? Okay, moving on. Want to do this one day still?
Yeah, listen up.
Mr. Mayor. Do you want to follow?
I'm going to take about a three minute recess so everyone can take a break and re-group. We're going to talk project, so a minute.